Okay, good evening. We're gonna call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. Quorum is present. We have Ms. Daines here with us virtually. We'll go ahead and start with our pledge of allegiance. Chief Leto, will you lead us? Thank you, Chief. Okay, we have two people signed up to speak on non-agenda items. First one up is Mr. George Booth. Your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Hi, good evening. George Booth, 124 Dogwood, Castle Hills. The reason why I came tonight, a couple reasons, but I wanted to bring to your attention the road on West Avenue. The white stripes are almost invisible to see, especially at night, and I've had a couple instances where people have really crowded my space and almost hit me, and so I think it's time to repaint them. It'd be nice if we did the yellow stripes, but the white ones are more needed. The previous city manager knew about it, of course he's gone, and it's been a couple years since we've talked about it, and y'all talked about possibly repaving it. Well, that hasn't happened, so if you're not gonna repave it anytime soon, it'd be great if you paid for stripes. I think some people avoid some accidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Next up, we have Mr. Kevin Canipa. Your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Hello, my name is Kevin Canipa, I live at 210 Hibiscus Lane. I made me to come over here and bring something to attention to everybody. You know, I noticed that I get really bad asthma and bad allergies, and some of the animals around there get sick when people spray a lot of the pesticides for their yard treatment programs, and I've noticed some of the people that treat the yards are sometimes wearing like almost hazmat suits, almost respirators, which I understand they have to do that could do the whole day, but I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that I noticed that whenever my neighbors use pesticides in the yard for mosquitoes or for the grass growth or whatever, the air smells foul for a while. Sometimes the animals, I see a few birds that even die on the streets, and I, my allergies act up and my asthma acts up, and I was wondering if, I know there's gotta be a state system that verifies all that, because I worked for the government one time, and I had a pesticide lice too, so I know, but maybe we ought to really see what they're doing, and if they're using stuff that's really legal. I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but some of that yard stuff they put out, it'll wait for for a couple days, and it doesn't kill just the mosquitoes. Like I said, I've seen birds dead on Fox Hall Lane after it's been applied, and then they tell the guy that puts it out tells me, don't walk on the road, don't walk on the yard for a while, and it just seems like it's a little too strong. So maybe, maybe somebody ought to look into it and see if these pesticide people are following the rules that are set out by the guideline of Texas, and if maybe they're not, you know, we ought to be concerned for our public health and our kids' health. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, nobody else signed up to speak. We will go into the consent agenda. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda with corrections.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Smith, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. First, I am a new business discuss and possible action on appointments to the Board of Adjustments. I have a recommendation that I wanted to bring forward, counsel. His name is Mr. Joseph Cuellar. He's a resident of Castle Hills. He's a business attorney that has been in San Antonio his entire life, very well accomplished, and he is actually good friends with an existing member of the zoning, I'm sorry, the BOA that recommended him. So, bring forward Mr. Cuellar, and if anybody has any questions, happy to entertain that, or if we can take a motion and move forward. Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we appoint Mr. Joseph Cuellar as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Haley. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you so much, counsel. Congratulations, Mr. Cuellar. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing on an application submitted by Trey Batch Elder for a substantial remodeling of an office building at 6803 West Avenue. Legal description CB 5778, Block 8, Lot 6A, 9 through 12 in the city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas. It is 6:35 October 14th, and we are going to open a public hearing.
Trey Batch Elder, if there was any questions or anything for me?
If, we'll do the public hearing now, and then we can have you speak to the item on the next one. Right now, I think we have Mr. Smiley Caleb signed up, and anybody else that would like to speak can come up.
I'm Bruce Smiley Caleb. I live at 247 Fox Hall Lane. I want to, I'm speaking for the adjacent business owners of this location, as well as a residential property owner in this vicinity. This is a long-term business. It is a great addition to the neighborhood, both in value and in city concept, and it is also taking care of a long, a very long-term business that's been in our city for many, many, many years. I highly support the recommendation of the Architectural Review Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there's nobody else signed up to speak, we'll close the public hearing at 6:36 and move on to item 6.3, discussion and possible action on application submitted by Trey Batch Elder for a substantial remodeling of an office building at 6803 West Avenue. Legal description CB 5778, Block 8, Lot 6A, 9 through 12 in the city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas. Mr. Batch Elder, thank you for being here. You're more than welcome to make any remarks, or we can go straight to counsel.
I just wanted to introduce myself, Trey Batch Elder, 245 Fox Hall Lane. I've lived here in Castle Hills all my life. My office has been at this location for the past 20 years. Property is owned by my father and now my mother, and they've had it for, I would say, since the late 70s, and we've done repairs what we can through the years, and it's not a, it's not a building that we want to just completely, you know, demolish and start over with limited space on the property, and I think this is the best conversion use that we can do with it for what we need to grow our business at this time, and just hope I can have y'all's support.
Thank you, sir.
Here to answer any questions if you need me.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Duque.
Mayor, counsel, on September 10th, the Architectural Review Committee met, and they recommended approval of Mr. Batch Elder's request. The ARC recommendation is for approval. Staff recommends approval of the request as well.
Thank you, Mr. Duque. Counsel, we have any comments, questions, motions? Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, in looking through the package submitted by Mr. Batch Elder, it looks like a really wonderful addition to that area of West Avenue, so I think that we should support it, and I would like to move that we approve his application submitted by Mr. Batch Elder for substantial remodeling of an office building at 6803 West Avenue, and as otherwise described in item 6.3 on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Mr. May. Counsel, any comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Batch Elder, for coming. I think the renderings look amazing and happy to support small businesses in Castle Hills. I know. I know. I just wanted to make a little comment before we voted. That being said, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Again, Mr. Batch Elder, thank you so much. Item 6.4, counsel, if you will indulge me, we will slide that to the back, because our attorney is not here yet. We'll go on to item 6.5, discussion and possible action to give the zoning commission direction regarding possible amendments to the zoning ordinance to allow market events other than farmers markets in a G general business district. Mr. Duque.
Mayor, counsel, at the August 12th meeting, Mr. Denker, the owner of the Castle Hills Market, addressed the council and requested a change to the city ordinance to allow a temporary use permit and temporary sign permit. These changes would accommodate occasional events at his business location. If the city council were inclined to facilitate this request, staff would need direction to relay to zoning to begin exploring possible amendments to facilitate this. Staff recommends giving direction to the zoning commission to explore possible amendments to the zoning ordinance to allow market events other than farmers markets in a G general business district.
Thank you, Mr. Duque. Counsel, comments, questions, motions? Okay, I'll ask one more time. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Haley. Ms. Daines, I saw you two just-
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Daines, go ahead.
Ms. Daines, if you want to.
Sure, can you hear me?
Barely. Give me one second. Let me turn it up for you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. I'll talk kind of loud, but I don't want to shout at you guys. I mean, I'm for having other vendors at a market besides just, you know, fruits and vegetables and farmers markets. I would need some direction either from the city attorney or the city manager on what kinds of information that zoning would need, but I'm happy for counsel to discuss that, to give them the additional information and direction that they're looking for.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. Ms. Haley, do you want to have a question before we pass it over to Mr. Snow?
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Snow.
Well, and to answer Ms. Daines, I think that simply the, the language that's in the agenda wording to ask the zoning commission to consider whether to add market events other than farmers markets as a permitted use in the G general business district will give them enough guidance on this issue. There is one other factor, and that is that there is currently a list of about 20 or 25 items, I can't remember the exact number, of uses that are specifically permitted in the G general business district. There is also a catch-all provision in our current zoning ordinance, which says that other uses may be permitted to be implemented in the G general business district with a special use permit. We had a request that may have prompted this agenda item to do a different market than a farmer's market for the holidays, and since this item would have needed to go through a series of public hearings, I suggested to Mr. Zamorin, and I believe he passed on to this applicant, that they could seek a special use permit that could be acted on by the zoning commission in early November and by the council on November 18th to get a special use permit, but so that we don't need to have those series of meetings every time someone wants to do a different kind of market. It makes sense to let the zoning commission explore this.
Ms. Haley, did you want to?
So if a special use permit will get the job done, we still want to have direction for what kinds of things, I mean, people would have to get a special use permit every time they wanted to do something.
Anytime they wanted to do something that wasn't already in that, that list of 20 or 25 or more items that are permitted uses in the G district, could apply for a special use permit in order to do that. But the distinction between a farmer's market and a holiday market is so small that it makes sense to avoid having to consider annually, for example, a holiday market and an SUP, rather than just add holiday market to the list of permitted uses. It's kind of once and done type thing, and the zoning commission can make a recommendation whether it would simply be to add the term holiday market or to describe it in a different way, but ultimately, the decision is made by the council, because the zoning commission only makes a recommendation. Under the terms of our zoning ordinance, changes to the zoning rules, what's a permitted use, where it's a permitted use, and the rules within this various zoning districts originate at the zoning commission. What this agenda item does is gives a clear message to the zoning commission that our city council would like them to consider this, and hopefully they will bring something back to the council that y'all will be comfortable in doing, but ultimately, you have the final say.
So in the meantime, could this, then this owner go ahead and get an SUP to get this market for this year, to go ahead and do, will they, you have to have one before you can do the second one, or can you go ahead and do that while we do the update?
They can, they can make an application for an SUP. It could get heard by the zoning commission the first Tuesday. Well, the first Tuesday in November is election day, but the election will be in the community room. It won't be in this council chamber, so zoning commission could convene at 6:30 on November 4th, have a public hearing, make a recommendation as the council, which the council would act on at your regular meeting on November 18. So there's an opportunity, if that applicant wants to do that, to pursue it. But this would, if the zoning commission comes back with a recommendation to add another use, it simply means that it wouldn't be an annual event for someone to have to come here, go through this, this process to get a special use permit to do the same thing that made sense in 2025. Why not just get it listed as a permitted use?
Sure.
Mr. Denker wants to have these monthly, or every other month at a minimum, when we spoke with him in August, and he's looking to bring in local and outside vendors to his property to, to increase the foot traffic for the tenants that are already in on that retail property, and also just bring in greater foot traffic using those vendors to supplement that. So he's just trying to enhance the tenants he has now with these market events and trying to get a two-for-one, basically.
Well, and since we don't have usually that kind of, our retail is not that so much so, so it is a, it brings more opportunity for shopping locally to our own, our own city, so.
Mr. May.
I think it's a great idea, and it seems to save everyone some time just compiling it. However, I, I would hope the zoning commission or the zoning people would consider putting in a fair description requirement, because if it's billed as a farmer's market, I want to see a vegetable. I just remembered the disappointment in the last one that was billed as a farmer's market.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Snow, I just have one question. Would the zoning commission be able to put some safeguards to ensure that this doesn't grow to be a traffic concern for the residents?
Well, the, the council can take action in that regard. The zoning commission can recommend certain restrictions or certain rules that would apply to the specific use permit, to the special use permit, but if it's a permitted use, then the rules in the G general district, the district regulations for the G general district would apply. That would cover parking, and, but the traffic would be up to the police department if there were a parking problem, or a traffic problem, I should say. Parking is, we have, we have, we have embedded in the G district and in most of our other districts, parking regulations. In the G district, there's different parking rules, the amount of required parking, depending on what the use is in the G general business district, but, but traffic would be subject to the police department's discretion. You know, the G general business district generally has frontage on major highways in our city, basically West Avenue and Northwest Military, and to some extent, maybe Lock Hill Selma, so the, the traffic problems would, would have to be dealt with by the PD.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Daines, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, the council to direct the zoning committee to move forward with delineating not just farmers markets, but also holiday markets and craft fair markets and what other wording they see fit, so that the, the owners don't have to go to a special use permit every single time.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Haley. Mr. Snow, just to confirm, that motion captures what we're looking for?
I think so, yes, sir.
Perfect. Counsel, any other comments, questions? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Gonna move around a little bit. We have item 6.8, discussion and possible action regarding a request from Wayne Carter and Wade Milton regarding the abandonment of an, of the alleyway between their properties at 124 Winston Lane and 201 Winston Lane. Mr. Duque? Sorry, I saw Mr. Carter out there and wanted to, didn't want to keep him waiting. 6.8, sir.
Mayor, counsel, in February, Wayne Carter, who resides at 124 Winston Lane, and Wade Middleton, who resides at 201 Winston Lane, requested the city abandon the alleyway between their properties. At the September 9th city council meeting, this request was presented with no action taken. One of the questions raised during the meeting was whether the property was an easement or right-of-way. Documents submitted by Mr. Carter confirmed the property is right-of-way, but the width of the right-of-way remains unclear. One diagram showed 50 feet, and the other showed 60-foot right-of-way. Staff's recommendation this evening would be to postpone action to allow us time. One of the steps that is necessary when abandonment of city property is considered is notifying all potential easement holders and receiving documentation from each utility that the abandonment would not create an issue for said utility. This step has not been taken. We all know that CPS has a utility easement in the rear of these properties. It's possible that they could oppose this abandonment and make this a moot issue. If you were so inclined, our next step would be to reach out to them and get their opinion prior to taking any action. But Mr. Carter and Mr. Middleton's attorney has prepared some documents that were presented or provided to the city attorney to review.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Snow?
I have reviewed, Ms. Fernandez did call me last week and summarized some of the main issues in the material that she presented. The document that she provided has blanks, so it is not ready for action until all those blanks are completed, such as the legal description, the form of the deed, and various other items. It is a somewhat creative proposal in that it skirts the issue of whether the city is making a gift of public property to private citizens, because the, it's unclear what benefit there is to the city by following all of the steps in the document Ms. Fernandez prepared and Mr. Carter presented, but there are certainly discussions that could be had that I think would result in a document which would be satisfactory, subject, of course, to the city council's willingness to take this action. I agree with the city manager that it is important to make sure that the utility companies, especially the ones most affected, do not have any objection to this property no longer being a public area, public right-of-way. I do think there does need to be some payment to the city that would remain with the city and be paid at the time of a conveyance. That is not exactly what is set out in the document that's been presented, but I, I agree with Mr. Duque that the first step is to see if there are any issues with the utility companies, and then have, get, get a sense from the governing body whether this is something they would like staff and the city attorney to pursue.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Counsel? Mr. May?
Given the announcement, it seems reasonable that we would table item 6.8 to the next regularly scheduled monthly city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Haley. I just want to confirm, Mr. Duque, that if a month is going to be sufficient time for you to talk to those utilities?
We will reach out to Ms. Carrillo at CPS first thing tomorrow morning and explain the situation, and tell them that we need a, a response back from them within, say, the next three weeks at the, at the most, gives us time to get that before the second week of November ahead of the meeting.
Perfect, thank you, sir. We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Going back a little bit, discussion and possible action to give the zoning commission direction regarding possible amendments to the zoning ordinance to revise the parking requirements for non-residential development. Mr. Joyce, did you want to lead this one?
Thank you, Mayor, sure. Yes, we have had the opportunity to look at our parking ordinance, particularly in commercial development. This is really more of an economic development analysis, as we received some, actually a complaint from a developer who wanted to develop and improve the center in Castle Hills Village up there, and was not able to because there wasn't enough parking, and based on the little bit of space that he wa- Okay. It's on, it's on. Yes, this is, I guess, is, the initiative for this comes from a developer who called me and made a complaint about not being able to make a significant investment in one of the shopping centers, because the little bit of space that he had proposed, there wasn't sufficient parking for it according to our code. So we took it upon ourselves, Mr. Mittelman and myself, to look into our parking ordinance, and we did a survey of our parking in some of these major shopping centers, particularly where restaurants and retail centers are combined, and we found, and I say, subject to Mr. Zamorin, who's the expert, subject to his concurrence, that our parking centers don't really meet the code as it is now. And so I just sort of did some surveying and walked around at different times of day, and found that in mid-afternoon, when the restaurants were not open, and even in the evening when they were open, there was plenty of parking. So it seemed like a, a look at this parking ordinance was in order, and so we've undertaken that, and so, you know, we're looking into the data now. There's a lot of stuff going on at a national level that might impact what we want to do, but in any event, what we're doing here is just kind of giving the zoning commission a heads up that we have a suggestion coming. Mr. Mittelman and I are putting a recommendation together that makes a specific recommendation to adjust parking in these commercial areas, and so that's essentially it at this point. Zoning, of course, will at the proper time have a hearing, a public hearing, and go about it in the proper way, but for now, it's just a heads up to zoning that this is coming their way.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Counsel, comments, questions? Ms. Haley?
Well, I move that the council give the zoning commission direction regarding possible amendments to the zoning ordinance to revise the parking requirements for non-residential development with an eye to- to revise the parking requirements for non-residential development with an eye to how it can positively impact the economic development of those areas and offer these people that are investing in the community. Long motion. Sorry, I should stop. What I'm thinking though, what I was thinking was, you know, uh, uh, econ- non-residential develop, uh, development, period. End, end of motion. You want me to go back and do it again? I've been moving. I've been kind of like, I'm, I'm kind of like-
We appreciate your-
What town and what town am I in? Um, revise the parking requirements for non-residential development, period.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Joyce.
Discussion.
Yes, ma'am, please.
So, with the eye for how it can positively impact economic development and support the people that want to make big investments in our city, to help our city with our resources and however that can be made better. Discussion.
I agree. Counsel, any other comments, questions? We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Uh, next up, we have item six point seven, discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten dash fourteen. Uh, amending the city of Castle Hills fee schedule, removing the alcoholic beverage fee if the business holds a food license. Mr. Duque?
Mayor Council, Senate Bill, uh, one thousand eight preempts a city's ability to charge a local license or permit fee under Texas alcoholic beverage code if the premises has a food license. Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-five, ten, fourteen, A. We need to add the letter A to that, correct? But? You're fine with that? Okay. Amend section four twenty-seven of chapter four, alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinances to reflect this new state law. The new language at the end of the existing, uh, section will read in accordance with Senate Bill one thousand eight, effective September one, two thousand twenty-five. No mixed beverage on premises permit shall be levied by the city if the establishment has an annual food license in accordance with chapter twenty, health and sanitation, article two, food service establishments. The city will continue to require a premise to have a mixed beverage on premise permit, but no fee shall be levied. The permit is necessary for other potential impacts. Uh, staff identified some issues with the master fee schedule, namely non-matching references to code that need to be corrected. This amendment will be included in the updated and corrected master fee schedule. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash ten dash fourteen, A.
Thank you, Mr. Duque. Ms. Haley?
I move that ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten dash fourteen A be amended. The city of Castle Hills fee schedule, removing the alcoholic beverage fee if the business holds a food license.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second? Mr. Snoll?
We're not amending s- the ordinance itself. The ordinance amends the fee schedule.
You want me to say it again? Sorry.
Adopt the ordinance to amend the fee schedule.
That, 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 the ordinance be adopted. Amending the city of Castle Hills fee schedule, removing the alcoholic beverage fee if the business holds a food license.
Thank you.
Did I get it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. May?
I'll second if I could insert one thing with friendly, uh, amendment, uh, referencing ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten dash fourteen.
A.
A.
Did I not say A? I'm sorry. Ten A.
You know, we know it's A now, right?
Got it. A.
Okay, so we have a motion. Are you good with the second still?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any further discussion? Mr. Joyce, please.
It's a quick question for Mr. Duque. Is this, uh, it's kind of a moot point, I suppose, since the state is mandating this, but, um, is this going to have a large impact on our, uh, sales tax?
The, it won't affect sales tax. The fee, the, uh, loss in revenue from the fee is approximately eight thousand dollars. You, I, this is so new, I, I would anticipate some cities are going to be looking at adjusting their food permit fees to compensate for the loss of eight thousand dollars or whatever the, the dollar amount of revenue they're going to lose. Uh, we do have, uh, was it about twenty permits? About twenty permits existing, um, that this is impacting.
Great question, Mr. Joyce. Uh, counsel, any other further discussion? We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have item six point nine, discussion and possible action on amending the agreement for engineering services with Bain Medina Bain to perform easement acquisition services for a possible drainage project in Castle Hills Drainage Watershed Phase, uh, Watershed Two, Phase One, Mimosa-Cromaria to West Avenue, and authorize the city manager to sign such engagement. Mr. Duque?
Mayor Council, at the, uh, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting, the city approved a work authorization with Bain Medina Bain for engineering services related to the Castle Hills Drainage Watershed Two, Phase One Mimosa-Cromaria to West Avenue project. The cost of the work authorization was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that is being paid via the two thousand and twenty-three certificates of obligation fund. The, uh, proposed scope of work for the project includes a design for channel reconstruction from east of Mimosa to West Avenue, box culverts at the Mimosa and Cromaria crossing, hydrology and hydraulics of existing and proposed condition. Limited field survey of the project area will also be conducted. The improvements call for an upgrade of the culvert for conveyance capacity and construction of a wider channel with concrete lining. The city is working with SAWs as it relates to sewer easements in this channel. Um, during their fieldwork, Bain Medina Bain, uh, had determined twelve easements would be, uh, would have to be acquired. The easements would be for drainage or sanitary sewer. In your agenda packet is the proposed amendment to the work authorization. The cost for the additional work is fifty-four thousand dollars. It would be paid from the same bond funds. The additional scope of work includes deed and plat research, right of entry letters, field work to locate boundary corners, post-processing and boundary analysis, and preparation of plat documents, which includes a survey plat with meets and bounds descriptions. The city will be required to assist Bain Medina Bain obtaining signatures from the impacted property owners. Staff's recommendation is approval of the, uh, request. Um, one thing that we want to note is that it is challenging to define a time period for easement acquisition due to the coordination with affected property owners. Uh, the city attorney reminded me that lien holders must also be, uh, notified of the easement dedication and they must approve it. And this can sometimes take more time than getting the property owners to approve the easement. Um, as this process continues, it will be necessary to notify SAWs, uh, that they can begin the design of the sewer line relocation that they must complete.
Thank you, Mr. Duque. Counsel? Comments, questions, motions? Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, mayor. I move that we amend the agreement for engineering services with Bain, Bain Medina Bain to perform easement acquisition services for a possible drainage project. Castle Hills Drainage Watershed Two, Phase One Mimosa-Cromaria, West Avenue, and authorize the city manager to sign such an engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. We have a second? Ms. Haley? Thank you, Ms. Haley. Um, Mr. Duque, do we know what the potential impact would be to the residents that have property or live in that area?
In terms of the, the easement?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, there's a drawing in your agenda packet, um, that shows the approximate location of the, um, of the twelve easements.
Well, and I'm looking at it too. I just didn't know how we can best, uh, explain that.
Uh, some of them are going to be construction easements, um, and some are going to be more long-term, uh, in, uh, have a longer impact. Um, I don't believe it should impact the buildable, um, or infill of these lots. I know that's been a question, uh, that was raised by the, um, the property owners off Cromaria. They've already reached out to my office about that. Um, and we gave them a copy of this, where they took a picture of it, uh, and, and kept that. Uh, so they're aware of this, and I think they've been speaking to Bain Medina Bain, um, on how that could impact what they were hoping to do in the long term.
So would the intent be to build back any fences that are taken down for construction?
That would be, that would be coordinated during construction phases. Uh, right now, I, I could not answer that question, sir, but I can check.
If you don't mind, I just want to make sure that, that was, we're trying to do something good, that we're minimizing uh, the negative impact to residents.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, we had a motion. We had a second. Mr. Smith, yes, sir.
Mr. Duque, I just want to make sure, uh, the fifty-four thousand dollar estimated cost of this, uh, do, is that in the current budget or is that on top of the current budget?
So that would be paid, uh, via the, um, certificates of obligation fund. So the funding's there. Uh, one of the things that, um, was holding up moving forward on this was trying to pass the major milestones of the Carrollwood-Manton project because that, that's also being funded by those bond funds. So we were trying to get past the major milestones of change orders that could have negatively impacted the ability to fund this project. I think we've passed those milestones, knock on wood. Um, but we're, we're now ready to start moving forward with this project.
Okay, thank you. And, and, uh, the SAWs portion, I assume, is being paid for by SAWs. Is that correct?
Uh, that was not the, uh, intent of, uh, SAWs when they came to the meeting, uh, in August. I believe they are going to be seeking, um, Castle Hills to fund these improvements since it's our drainage project requiring them to relocate their, their lines. Um, that's preliminary. We have not had any discussions about cost sharing. Um, I, I, I just remember that wasn't offered by them, um, to, to fund that, but we can discuss it.
Thank you.
Mr. May?
Mr. Duque, I have a question about the particulars. At least five years ago, that area of Crimea, uh, there were residents that expressed a concern about cementing in natural creek beds. Is that already a foregone conclusion based on the plans?
If, uh, looking at the drawings in my office, there will be some areas that will be concreted and there will be areas that continue to have the natural, quote, unquote, natural look. Uh, it's trying to mix them, but it will not be a fully concrete line drainage ditch.
Do the residents know that?
No, sir. We, the, only the affected people off of, uh, Cromaria and West have come in to talk to me about it. Um, since we have not, since we weren't ready yet to start moving forward, we have not pushed this out to the public. Um, we will wa- we will want to do that before we, we move forward with any potential authorizing solicitation of bids or anything like that. We'd probably want to have a discussion with those affected property owners. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we, uh, have a motion, second, no further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Uh, next up, we have discussion and possible action on change order number two for the Carrollwood-Manton Drainage Project. Mr. Duque?
Mayor Council, at the, uh, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting, the city awarded the Carrollwood and Matton roadway and drainage improvements project bid to de-plot the construction company in the amount of three million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. In May, change order number one was improved, was approved, increasing the contract cost to three million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars and fifty cents. As with change order number one, proposed change order number two is SAWs-related. The proposed cost of change order number two is thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-one cents. The, uh, change order number two is necessary due to a water tie-in issue that was identified by the contractor at the intersection of Carrollwood and Lockhill-Selma. In addition, on North Matton Lane, where an existing sanitary sewer line was exposed, the sewer line was found to be at an elevation in conflict with the proposed road base and subgrade treatment, so they had to make repairs. Um, due to proposed change order number two, twenty additional construction days will be added to the contract. The new completion date is January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-six. Uh, when this project started, SAWs agreed to contribute two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, both of these change orders are SAWs-related, thus SAWs' contribution will increase to offset these two change orders. Uh, the inter-local agreement that we have with SAWs, the terms do not, uh, require an amendment to the inter-local reflecting the new contribution. It is automatic. So combined, the two change orders are seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and SAWs is picking up that additional cost.
Thank you, Mr. Duque.
That, that's-
Mr. Snoll, you, everything good? Okay, perfect. So I'll make sure. Okay, counsel, um, comments, questions, motions? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that the council approve the, uh, change order number two for the Carrollwood and, uh, Matton Drainage Project.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Sir.
Second by Mr. May. Comments, questions? Counsel?
I shouldn't have done that, should I? I'm withdrawing my motion.
Yes, sir.
Because I live on Carrollwood.
Oh, we appreciate your enthusiasm. Ms. Haley?
I move that change order number two for the Carrollwood and Maton Drainage Project be approved.
Thank you, Ms. Haley.
Sir.
Second by Mr. May. All in favor? All opposed? Abstaining. Let the record show, Mr. Smith abstained. Thank you, counsel. Um, now it's a six point eleven, discussion and possible action regarding the loca- location of city promotional signs. Mr. Duque?
Mayor Council, at the March eleventh city council meeting, the city discussed the location of city promotional signs. And an agreement with TechDOT for the placement of the signs was approved. Six locations were, uh, selected. Northwest Military, north of the Interstate four-ten Frontage Road, uh, near the Northwest Military and Lockhill-Selma intersection, the West Avenue and Lockhill-Selma intersection, the Blanco Road and Lockhill-Selma intersection, near the Jackson Keller and Palm Circle intersection, and West Avenue, north of the Interstate four-ten Frontage Road. A TechDOT representative identified the following issues with the current plans. Uh, one, the plans require more details regarding the breakaway sign base. Uh, they were not sure whether the plans, uh, met the TechDOT standard. Um, the proposed sign is seventy-two inches wide. TechDOT is suggesting a T-style mount, uh, mount on the back of the sign rather than a single post. Sign number two is facing north for southbound drivers, restricting the ability of southbound drivers to read the sign because of the width of the road. They suggested placing the sign on the south, uh, southbound side of the road as you enter the city limits. Sign number four is too close to the traffic signal light and likely due to the amount of underground signal cables and other utilities in the general area. Placement of the sign foundation will not be feasible. In addition, this location is outside of the city of Castle Hills and would require City of San Antonio approval. Sign number five is located outside the city of Castle Hills and would require City of San Antonio approval as well. Sign number six is located close to an existing truck weight limit sign and should be moved. The ideal spacing between signs is approximately two hundred feet. Staff's recommendation at this time, um, is to bring this back in November to have, uh, new sign locations, uh, recommended and, and worked out. Um, I will- I will also let you know, we are working with a new sign vendor, we are. The previous vendor at this time would be classified as non-responsive. So we have to work with a new vendor. So this will give us time to work out all those issues with the signs with the vendor. Who is going to be responsible for the production and installation of the signs? But it would be necessary for the city to pick new locations for this.
Thank you, Mr. Duque, council. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, due to the proposals or suggestions by Tech Dot, I would move that item six point one one. Be tabled until the next city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. May, do we have a second? Second, Ms. Haley. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council.
If, if I could please have some council members. Help determining the new locations that they'd like, I would appreciate the help.
Some, some, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duque, Mr. Schnell, for this, we still have to go back to item six point four and. Item seven point one, both of which will be in executive session, can we read them in together?
Are the folks here from outside council?
Not yet, sir.
Then I would only open the item that doesn't require the presence of other council.
Okay, perfect. In that case, council, we are going to go on to item seven point one. Deliberation on the duties of the city manager, possible executive session pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven four Texas Government Code. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven twenty one P M. And we are going to executive session, thank you.
Guarantee, but you know, I think it was that branch. Oh, again, many people have mentioned shows. He's asking to get in here. Oh, yeah. You know, so we sleep. And now this guy did something to it. I guess he's not a booker. Just don't leave. But the item needs some Asian time. How can we go here? I would go somewhere. I didn't. I was like, oh, haunted. Hey, I was there. I convinced him. So there, I'll stay on repeat. What I had, they were playing more lively like this. And I used to turn off cameras, right? And I've done the late evening night of the brain. It's like, yeah, there's air then. And but then it became like, it was the best one in the house. It's been a lot. Yeah. His wife died and then he hooked up with the nurse. And it was when his two thirty house, he can't walk. And it's like, I doubt you have. Let's see. That's not just intervals. It's more visible. All of the areas.
Hello. I know. We, I know. We also.
Hey, stranger. We wait.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Well, Dave.
Hi.
Can you hear me? Well. It looks. It's make you.
At a minute.
Okay. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty and we're back from executive session with no action taken. We're going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
I am going to go into item six point four. Deliberation on the status of lawsuit style, Civi Gonzalez versus City of Castle Hills et al. Civil action number five dash five colon twenty dash C V dash eleven five five one and possible action. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorneys. Outside counsel is here. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth at seven fifty P M. and we're going back into executive session.
Thank you.
...
Okay, there's Miss Daines. Okay, it is Tuesday, October fourteenth at eight forty-five P. M. And we are back from executive session with no action taken. Council, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The city of Castle Hills and Sylvia Gonzalez have agreed to settle her lawsuit. Under the agreement, Ms. Gonzalez will receive five hundred thousand dollars and an expanded training on First Amendment retaliation will be offered across Texas, and employees and officials of Castle Hills will attend this training. Plaintiff also agreed to dismiss the individual defendants and settle with the city alone, which does not admit liability. The parties respect public service, civility, and do not condone any violence of any sort and are grateful for this peaceful resolution. This resolution of the litigation allows all involved to focus on positively serving their communities and fostering constructive public dialogue. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the settlement and authorize the mayor or his designee to execute the settlement agreement and all other related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Okay, motion passes. Next up, we have announcements by mayor and city council members on items of community interest. Mr. Smith? Ms. Haley?
November fourth through the eighth, the Passport to Flavor Castle Hills Restaurants World Tour coming to one of the forty Castle Hills restaurants near you. Take a trip.
Thank you, Ms. Haley, Mr. May.
Okay, I'm looking for a date in November for the next Historical Society meeting, and I realize that it's really Judy Crawford that needs to be the one that's available. But if anyone's out there that's interested, particularly those that have been here for a long time, I'm looking for those who really want to participate and get us over the line. There's a lot of planning. We've got just a few months, and I want twenty twenty-six to be a great celebration for our seventy-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. May, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Daines?
Uh, yes, um, trunk or treat is coming up on October twenty-fifth. It's going to be held in the Castle Hills Elementary School parking lot and as well as the commons. Dress up, come out, trunk or treat starts at five thirty, and then the CHCO is hosting like a glow party starting at six thirty, running all the way until nine thirty. So come out, they're going to have sausage wraps and nachos and lots of fun stuff. So please come and join us for the party.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. I want to thank our neighbors, like Fire Department, Police Department, everybody that participated in National Night Out. It was a great time this year. Also want to congratulate the book nerd, a new store that we have in the city of Castle Hills that just opened, and they've done a great job remodeling, and it seems like it's well received. So I'm excited to have another small business in the city of Castle Hills. All right, Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Smith, all in favor? Unanimous. Everybody have a good evening. Safe travels.